So it's important that both the staff and the council are responding, responding in a timely fashion and know what the expectations are. And I think today, perhaps, we could talk about some of those expectations so that we're all on the same page, so that it's not miserable for everybody. And, you know, it's fair to everybody, to all concerned. So I think that's maybe something we could discuss as well.
I'm gonna jump in there because, as was stated earlier, council is a part-time position. And I am guilty of not responding as well. One of the reasons that I make perfectly clear to anyone that'll listen, don't email me when you want a response. You know, tag me on my phone, text or call, one or the other. So if I don't respond to an email, it's very likely I haven't seen it. And I'm not ignoring you as a staff person, but I've been very clear to everyone on council, to the directors, when you need me, call my cell number. It is on the city's website, okay? Look up Council and Mayor, you know, look at my picture. That's my cell phone number. That is the best way to get me if you need something quickly. I'm gonna bring up a different issue. No one yet has mentioned inclusiveness. We are responsible. When you look at the org charts contained in the city's ordinance, you all in the room that live in town, this is your town. We work for you. Carol works for us, staff works for Carol. But the bottom line here is, we aren't responsible for setting policy. We are responsible for choosing the best policy, refining the best policy. The residents are responsible for setting policy, letting us know. And then we'll go from there. And that is not a point that we talk about often enough. When we talk about communication, it's communication to you. That's all wrong. Communication should be coming from you through us to staff.
And you're saying that's not occurring?
I'm saying it's not even welcome.
I disagree with that. I certainly encourage we spend most of every day of the week talking to citizens in our community about their concerns, about the issues.
The slide we just saw about leadership had nothing on there about inclusiveness. And about, you know, communication, yes, Mark's a good leader. And Lord knows I don't communicate well. I get angry and you've all seen it. I lose my temper and I'm not one of the world's great communicators. I have, what did you call it? It wasn't spirit, it was passion. Passion, yes. I ruled by passion. But my passion is for the public. And I don't see, I'm not saying, Paul, you individually do not welcome that. I see as a government, we don't make a solid point often enough about including the public to the degree that the public doesn't come. You know, one of the comments that I thought I was hearing is, you know, there isn't much public in workshops. There's a good reason for that. There's a very good reason for that. They've given up on us.
I don't even agree with that either, Mark.
Okay.
I don't feel that maybe some do have, but some may have. I'll agree. But I don't see that we've been given up on. I tell them.
Okay. I, that's my perspective. You know, certainly some folks are involved, particularly when we make an unpopular decision, but I don't think we've done as good a job as we can. It's very similar to what Dave's saying about communication. You can never master it. And I think we can never master the ability to include the public appropriately, given this is their topic.
I guess.
I can, go ahead.
I have two things. The one thing, in District Two, we have, we just had one of our first workshops on, we had some crime that took place. We had unbelievable, we had a standing room moment. I think there was close to 100 people who came out. And it was just from Fountain View and Whitechapel. An overwhelming response is they are beyond excited about how great the city is providing the services to them. We don't hear about that. We don't hear about the negatives of it. They're very excited that law enforcement caught criminals that were raped in their car within 48 hours of an undercover sting operation. Crime statistics are so much lower than anywhere else. We have a wonderful police force that responds. We have great city services. And yes, can things be tweaked? They can, but overwhelmingly, those people don't come out because they're very happy, satisfied, and excited to be in the city. And those people's voices are not being heard because they're happy. The only folks that come out that are happy are the ones that really aren't happy or the ones that really have the passion to wanna see how the city's performing. I've had an unbelievable response from other districts calling. And I wonder why they're not calling their district person. They're calling me because I go to my District Two people and I want their input because I am their voice. And I want the city, anyone, feel free to call me, but they should be calling their council person. They're the ones with their voice. But I wanna listen to everybody. I wanna hear all the input because I'm new. But this is not a part-time position. This is beyond full-time. It's 50, 60 hours a week. And we all know that. The public thinks it's part-time. It's not. This is almost a volunteer job. And because we are passionate, I'm a very passionate person, I'm here for you, the citizens of the city. The other thing I wish that people would do is we get a packet a week before with all the stuff coming up. If it's not communicated correctly, please call staff. We're sitting in these meetings to 3:00 in the morning. So they'll be on two hours on one issue, asking additional questions, additional questions, additional questions. If you have the questions, call staff ahead of time. That's beyond frustrating, me sitting up there because it makes us look weak that we don't know the answers. We should, if we have questions, ask them up front. And that's all that I want to say.
Just to add to that, our staff is extremely open and welcoming to citizens every day of the week. Many of our citizens come to ask questions of our department directors. They meet people at their homes. They go out of their way to accommodate residents. And I get good feedback about our staff and what they're willing to do. So they're definitely there for the calls and willing to take it or meet somebody about any problem that somebody's saying. So just as far as the communication coming in from the community, there's a lot of it that's occurring and a lot of people are satisfied with it.
Let me be very clear. I don't mean to say that staff isn't responding to the public. I have seen that as well. And I fully agree that in many individual cases, certainly folks in District One have appreciated the import of staff and the ability to interact with staff on a daily basis. I'm speaking more from a policy perspective, of the policies and of the setting, the goals of where we're going with the comprehensive plan, for example. Where are we going with just long-term policy things? I don't think that we're where we wanna be with including the public on those issues.
Can you give me a name of how you would like it to be?
I would like the public to fully understand and fully feel that if they have an idea to bring forward, if they have a comment to make, that that is welcome and that is appropriate and that it's not us versus them because of the organization of the room. You know, we can't even see each other here. So this is very much an us versus them. We're facing you, you're facing us. Just the structure of the room isn't what we were told it was gonna be. We were told it was gonna be in a round forum and where we could basically see everybody except for the folks immediately behind us.
Which is probably why it was changed so that it's back to somebody would be my guest, but.
Well, I have to lean forward to see you and I know that's uncomfortable for you today, so.
I guess.
So pull the two little sections back a little bit and then everybody will see everybody. Let's fix it.
Let's fix it. Pull this back.
Pull these two little sections back.
To be fair though, it's still a little bit of a line. So I'm still having to see Mark care about the back. Bring this aside.
Let's not fix it.
Either make it a round or a whole cough. The big place out. Hold on, let's watch this.
It's still in the corner.
The engineer's coming to help.
You know, I'll give you a real good example of this during the mayor's. First of all, when I laid the table out, I'm the engineer. I tried, you know, I thought about, my initial idea was to put a circle. Put a circle and then there's people in the audience and someone's gonna have their back. So I tried to create a you so everybody would have the chance to see it. I took a lot of heat. A lot of people just didn't like the fact that during the mayor's forum, I came to the front of the stage. You know, and a lot of people said I was grandstanding. What I was doing was there was a whole ton of people around the edge of the room that I couldn't see. They couldn't see me. So there was this nebulous voice. And they're real people. They're real residents, you know? And just like I am, you know? I mean, I'm a person in this town. I'm no more than that. You know, I happen to be elected to this position for the time being, but, you know, I go to the grocery store, I pay my taxes, you know? I get parking fines like everybody else. We're all people.
I mean, currently, what I'm seeing is I have a large, I have many groups in my city that. There's many groups in the city, in my district, that have not shared that they're pleased with a lot of the stuff the city is doing. I have homeowners associations that have had difficult situations. Residents against the power plant are mainly in my district. Build-A-Baptist Church is having a very difficult time with the city. So I have a number of folks that share discontent. There are also parts of city, you know, city services that they love, you know? I almost never hear any complaints about refuse collection, things like that. In fact, sometimes I even have a hard enough time utilizing all the services I get if it's almost overwhelming in some cases. And then as a resident, I have the unique situation of having given a lot of public comment and then also gotten onto council. When you're giving public comment, we're allowing folks to speak. But I don't know that we're always seeking to understand what they're saying. We're listening, it seems like we're listening, but you don't get the feeling when you're the speaker or when you're in the community that you've been listened to. You wanna hear the deliberations during the meeting. I like the meetings the way they are. They're long. There's probably something we can do about that. But that's where the discussion should happen. I don't wanna just go to a council meeting where everyone's already made up their mind because we've either had a discussion on email or a discussion just privately. We all get there and just vote. In some cases, the issue's simple and we can do that. But that's where we do our work, you know? If we need to do more work, we can meet. You know, there's plenty of provisions to do that. And I think by showing that discussion to the residents, it seems more open and honest, like, okay, well, that's why he made that decision. And there won't be that rumor mill about the community and say, hey, oh, well, you know, he made it because, I assume he's thinking this way. If you see it in action, you'll know how and why the decision was made. And I, you know, granted, if there's some major error or some major issue you need to get clarified before the meeting, obviously, you know, there's staff that asks this way. And I try to do that. So, but my main point is that I think we should do the public's business there. We should seek to understand from the residents. We're doing a better job of that. Our last workshop, we let the community speak a lot more than I think we normally did, though I haven't been to a lot of workshops before, so I could be wrong about that. But that's the way I see us. We're increasing our public input. I think we're listening more and I think we need to continue on that path and show the public how we get to decisions. What public are you, you talking about just the people that are in the meeting? Are you talking about the other fly-by-passing people in the district? How are you communicating with them? Because that's my biggest concern is we don't have the ability because we're elected that we can't get a little fund, send newsletters out. Everything has to come out of our own pocket. You're talking about folks in the room versus, like, I'm going out to Fountain View, I'm going out to Usher, and we're not, and I'm trying to get their opinions on my own time. How are you getting their opinions? Because you're just, sounds like you're just talking to the people in the room at the meetings.
Well, first, we're talking about the form of the meeting.
Right. You said I get, I get plenty of email communication. I do go meet the community. I go to homeowners association meetings. That's how I'm meeting the public. So they're taking the news and thinking it's coming from, because a lot of those folks won't come.
Right. And so obviously, there's folks that you wanna talk to before the meeting or folks that don't have the opportunity to attend. But if you do attend the meeting and you don't feel that you've been listened to, that's a problem.
So what better job will we do to convey those folks that we're listening to?
I think responding to the community in some of those cases. It takes weeks or months in some cases to get some of those responses out. A lot of times, the community has to figure things out for FOIA requests and other situations, not just the power plant folks. Even the homeowners association residents are telling me how she had to FOIA information to figure out stuff about the public works, infrastructure for neighborhood. You know, so there's frustration there, how to get the city to respond to a level that the residents are now pleased with.
So this homeowners association president, did you first call city staff?
Mm-hmm. So, and I'm just getting involved with that homeowners association since their first meetings and so have council. But, you know, I think that, I hope that we can have clearer communication with residents without having residents resorting to so many FOIA requests and that instead of getting information from the city. What I'd like to see is all of us discussing here today that we have to have the ability to pull our district, get, find ways that we have budgets to communicate with them because they are the voice and we're just one voice in that district. And it's, you know, as being a volunteer position, is pretty much what this comes out to be, we have to use our own resources to do that. So I'd like to have the ability to pull my district on the topic that comes up, present the issues to them, and let them decide. And that's how we vote long as legal, we vote with the voice of our district. So I'd like to see somehow have the ability to do that.
I agree. Certainly, my job is clearer when I hear from my district. I can send out hundreds of emails. When I first started the reservoir, it was a big issue in my district. And I heard from a lot of people on the reservoir. It's significantly issue-driven. I've had meetings with the hunt where they, you know, affected a lot of people. They'll show up, affected a few people. The turnout was much lower. I can send out an email saying, hey, I'm looking for guidance for people. And I'll either hear back nothing or I'll hear back, we trust your judgment. Go ahead and make your decision. So, and that actually makes my job a little more difficult because I need to hear people's comments. In terms of communication, part of the issue getting information out right now is everything has to be words down to the last word in terms of, well, if you send us, if I take a short amount of time and send out the information, it gets jumped on, oh, well, you chose this word or what did you mean here? It's not like I can't just get it out there. It has to be perfect for the information getting out. It'd be a lot easier if I didn't feel like everything had to be exactly worded to get the information across without, you know, a lot of blowback.
So just hold your comments to the end, you'll have a chance.
That's life in the big city. You know, you all have seen me write things.
It's relevant to what Todd said.
I understand that, but just hold on till the end and you'll have your chance.
It takes me an hour to write a page. And it takes me an hour to write a page because I choose my words.
Yep.
And, you know, you all have seen me write misses, many pages long. And to touch point, this is not a part-time job at that point because every single one of those pages represents at least an hour on my part. But that's what we signed up for. We signed up to serve and that's part of serving.
That wasn't my point. My point was how fast you can get the information.
I understand.
And does it take, it'd take me the better part of a day or half a day just to do my emails, newsletter, because they have to be very clear, very factual, you know, what's going on without, okay, hey, I wanna let you know this is coming, but, you know, it gets to take more time. And I think that's true of staff too.
There is another comment that deserves to be said here. And one of David's slides talked about communication within council, council of council. And I feel council is hamstrung with that according to the requirements of the public right to know of FOIA. We cannot be making decisions in emails. We cannot be even having those conversations in private. So one of the reasons the meetings do run long is because it's one of the only chances we have to talk to each other. And it's always done in public and that's the correct way to do it. So I don't see how we fix that. I really don't. And I'm not asking for advice. I'm just saying there are realities about the fact that we can't have those conversations in private. While we can have individual relationships, you know, while, well, the two of us can go to breakfast or while, you know, whatever.
So you're lying to that app.
I'm lying next time, yeah. You know? We can't do it. We just plain can't do it. And so it's not that we don't intend to. It's not that we don't intend to, you know, talk to each other or get to know each other or whatever. The law says we can't. And that changes the dynamic. There is no law in corporate culture that says you can't talk to each other. And yet there is a law here and it's there for a very good reason.
But, you know, there's nothing that says that we can't meet each other individually and get to know each other and discuss our philosophies about life and things and get an intuition thing going, you know? So that you feel comfortable with everybody that you work with your own council because we've built this relationship individually. We are allowed to do that. We just.
Yeah. We aren't, we aren't allowed to do it one by one by one by one by one.
No.
As far as.
As an issue. But like, we can meet and talk about bees. And I can meet with Luke and talk about financial stuff, which I hate. That's why we haven't gotten together, buddy. And I can meet with Todd and talk about shootings over in Fountain View. And I can talk with Stu about computer stuff. But that's all part of, it may sound like there are trivial things to talk about, but these are things of interest to all of us that we know interest us. Or maybe there are some other things that help us to get insight on who we are and may make us more comfortable with working with each other. That's all I'm saying.
Yep, I fully agree. And that, again, to touch point, you know, there's no, that all comes out of our own pockets, which, okay. You know, we're gonna have dinner with someone, so why not have it be someone on council?
Yeah, take it out of my expense account. Ooh, did I have one?
No, you don't have one.
This might be a small step back in the conversation, but we kind of answered a few problems here. Todd, you said something about clarifying questions on agenda items or asking staff additional information about an agenda item, maybe a new policy decision or something like that. And as you said that, I wrote down, you know, asking those questions privately before meetings rather than public discussion. And Rob, you actually shared a feeling that I've had since joining council, which is if it's worth being on an agenda, it's worth having a conversation and that always means in the public. Even if it's something that from the gate I'm not comfortable with, I'm not supportive of, that sort of thing. Not a prejudgment, but hey, it got to the agenda, let's have a conversation. And always in public. What I'm not wholly proficient at, but I found works well, is to have those questions prior to the meeting, get the clarifications, especially if it's just that, am I understanding this correctly or I think there might be a typo here? But then draw attention to it again in the meeting. So if one of those staff members is at the podium, in 30 seconds or less, be able to tell the rest of the council members, hey, this is the conversation we had. I don't know if anybody else has had this question, but here's a question, here's the answer, that sort of thing. And I've noticed in the past, Andy, you do it very well. He'll typically summarize that in his introduction of whatever that agenda item is. And then kind of say, you know, I've had this conversation with you and I've had this conversation with you. And now we all kind of understand that. And it just propels that much farther or closer to maybe an ultimate decision. The other thing that has been picking up in the last couple of months is, and I think it's in response to something you said, Mark, that we can't be communicating back and forth via email very much at all. We have to be really, really careful. However, if I have a question to Maureen, then lately what's been happening is Maureen asks Renee to kind of distribute my question or her response to everybody. There's no further deeper conversation about it, but everybody got to see that coming into the meeting. I think that's been helpful. That's been.
Yeah, I think that's been a good change. You know, I was asking a lot of those questions like, hey, you know, when you're starting an email chain, you very easily get to four council members. So I think that if someone suggested that, Bruce, and say, hey, you know, if there's a question, then staff can just forward it to everybody and say, and there's no discussion on it, it's just like this is what we're discussing. Here's the information so we all have it for the discussion. And that can speed things up.
And it's not that we're making decisions prior to a public forum at an appropriate time and place. But I think there's a balance that can be made in making efficient meetings but keeping everybody informed as well, council members, fellow council members and the public.
Some of that communication, I think some of you were talking about, that goes on in between meetings can and should perhaps come under the category of education. Educating yourself, trying to understand the issues. Whether you're asking a staff member, whether you're asking one of your fellow council members, whatever. You're trying to understand the issue, which makes the public discussion a little bit more efficient. If you ask it in advance as opposed to taking the time, if you will, you can ask it during the meeting, but you can't. But it's just a matter of maybe efficiency, if you will. In terms of educating, there's so many issues.
And I literally was just gonna say that. I think we, our beforehand stuff is completely educating ourselves. So we make it, and we have that discussion. We have all the knowledge because all is good to agree or disagree. But at least we are all educated in what we need to do to make that decision.
For me, it's important that we do our homework prior to coming to a council meeting. So homework is reading your packet, understanding what's in your packet, perhaps asking questions so that if you don't understand something in the packet, you can get the information and bring it to council so you can educate the rest of the council members. I mean, for me, sometimes when things are at council and brought up, I didn't think of it. I didn't see it that way. I didn't ask that question. But as it turns out, it's an important one. So I view it as helping all of us come to the right decision by asking those questions ahead of time or getting the information that's possible to you so that it can be shared with everybody. And it's important that then you come to the council meeting and you share that information. You don't keep it in your back pocket. You share it with everybody so that we can all make the best decision.
You mean sharing it ahead of time?
Sharing and/or.
So part of my education process in preparing for a particular meeting of a particular agenda item, I've had some sort of discovery or some thought process. And if it's profound or maybe could be a game changer and everybody else is kind of sharing that ahead of time is what I'm saying.
Right. And then coming also to the council meeting and making that like Andy does and you do, saying, look, I had this question, I asked so-and-so, this is the response I got. I wanted to share that with all of you so that you can have that information in formulating your decision.
Like the one time when the council gave, think about that tower that's with a little speaker in it, right there. I don't know if you knew it before. Right there, I don't know if you knew it before or, or right then and there, that was against procedure, that could have been taken off the agenda, you know, beforehand. Because we knew there was a problem or you discovered there was a problem. Maybe get that off.
It wasn't certain there was a problem, but I had the question that I asked. I don't think it's a requirement to make sure that everyone is 100%...